Pressure, pressure will be at peak for all the master meter communities. The next one we have that I've already kind of talked to Carol Rocky with Pelican Preserve and the Residents Alliance to start working on Prado and Pestoia. Casella is a master meter community, but Casella with its insignificant amount of water compared to... Prado is going to be a problem. Prado is going to be a real issue with us because that is... Daniels Preserve is the largest of the communities right now. It's 215. Prado I believe is 334 with one meter and it's an eight inch meter.
Pestoia is going to be real cupcake because it's got huge lots.
Yes. Pestoia, we're on our master meter recording almost 2 million gallons and there weren't any homes on the place yet. Common areas say what... That's our next... That's where I'm going next. We're going to try to get Prado... Another thing with Prado is that there's not an HOA really yet. I sat down with their acting HOA president and with Carol Rocky and we started to set everything up and they don't seem to think it's a problem, but that's going to be a problem. They have got significant amounts of common area. I would even dare say in Pestoia they got more common area turf than they do residential turf.
Well, when they get the bill I'll bet they change their minds about it being a problem.
That's all we have.
The other thing I'd just like for you to touch on is I know you told me that you were going to be going out and trying to locate clean outs in the community where they've been covered over or probably cemented over in some cases.
And the biggest one was Daniels Preserve and we really, we knocked all that one out. Say we are still, every community that we go into, we go into now as crew and they sweep the communities and if they're buried or if there's a real problem like what we found in Daniels Preserve, we address it. And we are still doing that. Let's say Stony Brook is another one, another issue. They're not so much buried as they are broken and cracked and we've been cambering them. Every time we go out we camera, try to camera 15 to 20 in a cycle and we're saying that's just going to be an ongoing thing.
It'll just take a while, but you'll get through. And that's the kind of thing that really makes a huge difference. Thank you, Ken.
One detail about that, that's the clean outs on the road curb side where I'm doing homeowner cleanup.
Right, right. Yes, that's correct. But the clean outs that are on the roadside, a lot of them are underneath sidewalk or they've been, the residents have allowed the grass to grow over where they are.
We opened the cat tub and it's just dirt and it's over here, but somehow it got moved over here and it just...
Do those lots have double clean outs?
Majority of them. Unless, the only time you'll see a single clean out in this community is if there's a storm drain in the front of the yard. Storm drainage communities, they go to singles. Majority of them are all dual clean outs. Rainwater and sanitary sewer.
Because I know in where I live, it's just a single clean out at the house foundation.
Some of them, some of them have two.
I've never seen two in our community.
Yeah, some of them do. Some of them have two, usually on the right-hand side. The right-hand side when it crosses over usually has two and it's usually always buried. They are there usually.
Thank you, Ken.
May I ask you one quick?
Absolutely.
On your written report here on the schedule changers, you say all residential irrigation controls will be changed to the new watering days. Can you tell me precisely what's...
Yeah, on the master meter communities, we are switching them off of the main demand days, which were Wednesday and Thursday and Saturday and Sunday for residential's that have an individual meter per house. But on the, on the non-meter, being the master meter where I have 215 units but one irrigation year, we are shipping them to new days.
What are the new days?
Monday and Tuesday and then Thursday and Friday. So the only day that the residential's and the master meter's crossover will be Thursday.
Can I ask you a question? You're going to go in like the garage and go into...
No, we're not. Well, the HOAs hire somebody that they're, that you know, that the HOA does, the homeowners want and then they go through each residential house and change the timer.
And change the timers?
Yes.
But any owner can change the timer there?
Sure, yes. They can, but the plan is to get everybody on the same, same schedule and the same times and...
So if they're watering on the weekend, who's going to police them?
It'll show them.
Yeah, we will. The thing with Daniels Preserve is that Daniels Preserve and our meter change out. Daniels Preserve was the only one that was not changed out. It's a six inch meter. We have changed, we've ordered the meter to change it out, excuse me, but the old meter does not give us the information that the newer meters does. The newer meters are smart meters. They tell us when, how much, what time, stage. Where the old meter, you're just reading the meter. It's just a set of numbers and you just, every 30 days you go out and read it. But yes, there's nothing to stop an individual homeowner from going back and changing their kinds, but there again, in the master meter community, what we found is that that polices itself.
District engineer, I don't see our district engineer.
Nope, he is not here today. He's available on my phone.
All right.
Let me grab Mike.
We'll move to... He is D, so we'll move to district council.
Yes, Madam Chairman, we had discussions at the last board meeting with regards to update on the status of the conveyance to the district of the property known as the FPL easement lands and a question was asked as to the pros and cons being addressed and being articulated. And I recall that I prepared a memo in the past, time flies, okay, with regards to that. And that's the first memorandum gives the pros and cons with regards to the district maintaining just its drainage easements in the FPL easement lands or the district obtaining title to that real estate. And the page on the agenda, page 16, summary, paging my memorandum, my opinion as to the, basically when you start weighing it, that there are more pros than cons, the district to own that land and be simple with our opportunity to control it. We still have exposure and liability because we operate and manage a stormwater management system, that's part of it. But this way, by ownership, we would have the right to control, you know, access, trespassing and on balance, ownership and peace simple, my opinion, provides greater control and ability to utilize it for other purposes, other than just drainage. And so then the second memorandum is a recommendation as to accepting the conveyance subject to certain conditions and one of which was WCI had indicated that they would work with us to obtain assurances from Lee County as to the PUD DRI compliance issues, including park requirements, so that we did not want to follow of any assertions that there were not sufficient park acreage within Gateway, because part of the FPL easement area is considered open space or park under the PUD DRI. So if there are any questions, please answer me. And once again, hopefully the memo from earlier this year, that's the first item in the agenda, that begins at page nine with my recommend, opinion at page 16 on the pros and cons, addresses, answers those questions. And if not, any questions?
Yeah, I don't have any problem with it at all, other than I was trying to read and I never did get or understand why the WCI calculation of the acreage was 146 and Chuck's was 162. Where did we create 16 acres?
I don't know if we created, I think it's just a matter of what lands were included.
Right, so you, we are the opinion the 162 is correct.
The acreage that's included within the survey that was prepared by all of us?
Yeah, I looked at our guy's survey, but I didn't see unless I missed in the fine print. Typically they get done with the legal description and then they say contain more or less 152.65 acres. I couldn't find that to say whether that backed and supported the 146 or the 162. Other than that, I didn't have any other, any other issues. I totally agree with you. The, much better to have that as a fee simple because we have a bunch of issues up there, notwithstanding our irrigation problems of getting rid of excess water and being able to utilize that for a bypass of storm or sanitary sewage down the FPL easement to benefit Hampton Park and Stony Brook and Prado Pestoia's sewer flow that right now comes down Gateway Boulevard and just gets bottled back. So it's very beneficial to us to have that, that property. And the other one is that I, as you said, the DRI for Gateway does mention a total acreage of 230, 220 acres and the only way to get 220, 230 acres is to have that 156, 162, whatever it is, acres of the FPL available to accommodate that.
Included with the side of the park, side of the complex.
It's still a linear park which has been in earlier design.
As long as we have a understanding and agreement on the acreage that we're accepting, I want to make sure we're not getting somebody's backyard.
They're not.
I'm all for authorizing what Tony recommended to start the process of getting that transferred over to us.
Mr. Brown?
Thank you, Madam Chairman. Mr. Attorney, on page five of your memorandum, there was a statement that we have to agree to a whole harmless. Now, when I was working full-time, I tried to...
Avoid those dudes. Avoid those things.
Void is right. I tried to stay clear of any whole harmless statements in any contract that I signed. Do you want to give me a little bit of comfort that we ought to...
I always try to avoid those also, but the difficulty is the document, it's an existing document that encompasses the property. It's an existing right that FPL has. It's there whether we own it fee simple or not. I mean, we are subject to that. We are a holder. So either way, we are subject to that, you know?
The other thing is, keep popping up in my mind is that we heard from two beautiful ladies a little bit ago about the problem with our fun park. This looks like to me it could be a fun park to a whole new increased problem and I'm wondering how in the world we're going to make all of our residents happy with things that may be going on in this new area that we own.
I think by only we have greater control, right now we're just using the holder. We have no right unless we're an agent of WCI to act as an agent for trespassers and so it provides greater opportunity and also...
Opportunity, is that what you said?
To police it on our part. One other aspect too is the FPL is very protective of the easement areas and if there were to be any activities going on of some sort or nature, I think us working with them, it would help cut down any bad activity.
And the other thing is you can limit it to like pedestrian traffic.
We can fence it off.
Yeah, fence it off.
It wouldn't be like vehicles being able to go back there like cars and trucks and it would be pedestrian and bike traffic that would be going.
And they'll have those little ATV things running around in there.
Well, that's the... B, it's not happening now, so I can't see that ownership would change that from happening.
No, we have...
I will stand to be corrected, but I thought there was some ATV traffic going on in there.
When I, when I lived back there, what I would see is golf carts, bicycles. Very rarely, I can't even remember the last time I saw an ATV.
So it was little bicycle powered scooters, seen those?
Yeah, but again, it's been a couple of years, but...
I've heard about complaining about it.
Yeah. We never really had any issues. And I lived right on the lake, adjacent to the service route.
Brother, a fancy thought.
There's nothing perfect unfortunately, Mr. Guy.
So is there a motion to authorize you?
To continue pursuing the transaction with WCI with the, obtaining the assurances to be adequate acreage under the PUD DRI for open space.
David, did you have anything? Were I open? Okay. I'd make the motion and we authorized Tony to continue that discussion and attempt to get this thing transferred over to us with fee simple title.
I will second.
But that includes getting a definition of the acreage.
We got surveyed. The only thing, I couldn't find bills, I didn't see and define the total.
I'll get the total for you for the point. It is the right acreage. We had, there's a little bit of issue with the survey about, they initially had part of Gateway Boulevard in there, we backed that off and so that's why we went back and redid the legal descriptions. I'm sure that was correct.
The only question that I'd ask is, what are we looking at as a timeframe? Because we've been trying to get this done and get ownership of it for years.
As soon as possible. I'd like to ask you something.
What is as soon as possible? Two months, three months, six months?
When Neil returns my call saying we're good, we got a letter from Lee County.
Okay.
So we're waiting on Neil McGovern?
Well, once again, I'll talk to Charles. He's been busy.
All right.
WCI doesn't want ownership either. They want a...
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Does this include Commerce Lakes and...
Separation.
Is it just FPL?
The next item is a memorandum with regards to authorization to proceed on an alternative path, but with regards to the cleaning up the ingress egress opportunity to Area 9. The interdomain process can be more expensive and time consuming and costly. I've talked to Charles briefly and he, in the meantime, the holidays sort of interrupted all the activity, but he, and I chatted about the possibility, but it sounded like it would be very cooperative in pursuing this, be a quiet title action, the district would be quit claims to be right of way, that's currently owned by other entities and then we would quiet title to 50 feet strip.
So Reflection Isles is going to grant us an easement?
No, quit claim, of course, no, they have easement area.
Okay, along, along the south border, all the way to the interstate, then north?
North-south is a big way, that's a big way, north-south.
Okay. My problem, my thought has always been that 50 foot square where the tower is at.
Correct, and that would be the only area where we do the quiet title action would be as to that owner BJ Holdings.
Okay.
And that's it.
That's it.
Saying that there was a mistake in the beginning, that that 50 feet should have been separate and apart.
Okay, they've been in the past obstinate on doing anything on that. Are they, were they going to put a sign, somebody, who's keeping us from having solved this five, six, seven, 10 years ago? I thought it was that property.
That's that property.
That property's the problem.
Yeah, but that property, I think all the attorneys are comfortable that what was intended was to have that 50 foot north-south, 50 foot line, north-south strip available for ingress egress to northern properties. And unfortunately, though, in the deeds, the executed recorded and multi-party transaction, you can see that, you can track them through, there were two legal descriptions attached to the one deed. So the BJ Holdings has asserted that they are the owner. Other people, parties say that was a mistake. They are not the owner of that 50 feet.
Okay, if we can get past that, then my only other question is, we need to put your figures there, and I think it's exhibits C and D, B and D, something, that shows us being the CDD owning two other out parcels.
Yes, and then we own those, 93, 94, we own those.
Why?
Well, we've had that discussion before.
Those pieces of property are to us are absolutely worthless.
I understand, but that's been, that was, that occurred back in the...
Well, say you, as if they were to be amended about that tower site, move the tower to that piece that's along the interstate, well, we haven't swatted.
It's weapons. But again, this is, I think...
Don't tell everything you know.
I would suggest this be the opportunity, a way to try, at least try this route first before going the interdomain route. And I think like our will be cooperative with WCI at this point. Reflection Isles people are nice people too.
Let's do it.
Now, once we get to where the canal, the flowway comes across I-75 and heads north, from that point on, we're clear?
I'll come to that, we can see it. Up to 50 feet, up to that.
Yeah, well, my question is, is that do we have enough legal boundary from I-75 West right of way line to where the road we're going to put in on the west side of that access?
I'll double check.
Because I can't find anything that shows that to mention. The plans that Orca did implied 100 feet from the west side of I-75.
I don't think there's 100 feet.
I'm hoping like there's 100 feet.
Oh, yeah.
Since it's not, I don't, I don't think we have enough room for a road, which means we have a problem again.
I'll check with Tyler and Danny to make sure that we have the, we're trying to get that.
Yeah, because if you go outside that road any further to the west, you're in a weapon.
Mr. Guy?
I sure don't want to take a canoe up that flowway.
Swan buggy.
Swan buggy.
I have the feeling that this is going to cost us a lot of money and that Lee County's going to get their nose into it to relate with the construction of that road. Do I, do I have any correct thinking about that?
I don't know. It's in the city of Fort Myers, I believe, and I, if this, if this legal proceeding could be less expensive than going the interdomain route, because interdomain, we have to hire an appraiser, we have to have the survey, we have to make a good faith offer, you need the approval of Lee, arguably, possibly of the city of Fort Myers and it gets, and it can be dragged out, it's a jury trial, it can be much more complicated and compensation will be paid.
Why don't we do, I thought we were talking about, we're just going to go in there and start using it.
There was a discussion about that, asking for forgiveness versus...
Well, the, the problem we've got right now is that, as I understand reading your documents, is that we're cleared for either lime rock and or stone for approving the road as long as we don't create an elevation dam.
That was reflecting a conversation I think that Tyler had.
That's, that's critical because right now, six months of the year, unless and until we do something to surface that road, put stone, put in some type of drainage, it's worthless. You can't get back there.
In the meantime, very little water is going to be going down that so-called canal because there's stones and rocks and trees and everything else in that place.
Well, that's, that's a secondary problem. That's, that, we have to solve that too. Do we have to get that problem solved?
I thought we were just going to go in there and start solving it instead of sitting here talking about it and spending money on it.
We need, we need to get a Sikorsky helicopter to drop our contractor in because we don't have the right to go back there.
Well, we believe there is the right, I believe that someone can say that not, if we take holdings, that's the issue.
That's the point. You can, you can get close to it, but you've got to go past that 50 feet.
Well, again, there's a city of Fort Myers utilities and all that property too, and so arguably we could get the city of...
The bottom line is from that Reflection Isles road to where you turn right to enter this easement area, all the way around, probably a distance of a mile, take a little over a mile?
The quiet title action only involves that.
It's horrible. I understand.
Do you need a formal action for this?
Yes, I already have the board authorized proceeding on the quiet title action at the present time. If that's unsuccessful, I think it's going to be more complicated than I guess. I would come back and...
That's the best first step.
So...
I'll second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
You might be repeating.
Authorized proceeding on the quiet title action is the best first.
Since Kathy, Kathy's not here.
Just a...
Make it happen.
The question that was raised with regards to local road status, sent correspondence by certified mail to the officers at the time of dissolution, Mr. McCowen involving Commerce Lakes Drive refused the certified mail, Mr. Brignett.
Refused to accept it?
Yes. Return to sender. Mr. Brignett in Jacksonville signed for it. I've not heard from him. I'll just follow through with the phone call. He was the other officer of the...
Were they both at those addresses you had?
No, I had new dresses. They actually signed, Mr. Brignett actually signed for this. So I got, I'm waiting for WCI with regards to the quit claim deed as to, like Town Lakes, I think, Fairway Lakes? Fairway Lakes, yeah. And I don't have any other...
If you've been involved as to what, understand what he's talking about, we have to get one of the prior officers to sign.
You found them, one, one accepted, one refused it, but obviously he was there to refuse it, so if they don't...
What we may want to do is just send a letter, if we haven't been in contact, to let them know that we are sending certified, you know, because he may just say, look, I'm not accepting anything certified.
The letter's already gone out. Yeah, they went out and they...
So he should be, he should have been expecting the certified.
No, the certified letter went out first.
Well, that's, that's my point. He may have rejected certified letter just hey...
For two months, I was trying to chase those guys down, so...
I'm just wanting, just give a heads up, hey, this is what we're looking for and then it may not be so quick to say, hey, I'm not, I'm not signing for certified.
They're not whatsoever to sign this document. I mean, nothing.
Well, my point is...
They don't know what it's about.
You reject your certified letter because hey, if you don't, you don't accept it, you don't accept it.
Well, one gentleman accepted it, so what I was going to do is a follow-up.
And we only need one?
Yes.
Oh, okay, so as long as we have one.
I'll call him to follow up and just say, hey, you got the letter? Please.
Thank you.
And then also, do you know where Paul is? Can you talk to him? I'll ask nicely. No, I think the other one was not, it was Town Lakes.
Was Town Lakes?
Yeah, and so I'll just follow up.
Town Lakes, we already had an agreement that we're working there deal. We definitely have a solution for that, is we're doing it and we're billing them.
And the title company came back there, Tyler reported, indicates WCI is still the owner of that road. And so I just asked for a quit claim deed from WCI one hour for that road.
Okay, well then we'll take it to the next one. What about Fairway Lakes?
I don't have any return back at all yet. Net zone, the letter went out to Brian Dvorsnak.
Dvorsnak.
It's not come back one way or another.
Where did he go? Is that Diesel's?
He sold that pine drive.
Easy.
That's where his most recent address is. 11441.
Okay, I'll go down by his house.
Bring him cookies. He just can be...
That's another one that, that there's no skin off their back whatsoever to sign up on this.
Going, going with his ass. I'm going to do a report at the first meeting February where we are, so we have to pursue the alternative route, asking for trustee to be appointed and how that's going to be funded. The next one is good news. Chris, you going to handle the good news? It's not really my ballpark, it's more Chris's ballpark, but...
Actually, we had some issues with property damage claim with Comcast instead of work several months back and after going back and forth, the insurance company said they were going to deny the claim and I was quite surprised because even the Comcast, the people they worked for were pointing their finger at them for what happened and it was basically the $14,000 question, 13,000 for our contractor to fix the pipe and half the roadway going in. They had about $1,000 of our time, but they didn't send us a check four days after...
Full amount?
Yep, four days after they said they weren't going to pay it. Well, I threatened them with litigation with Tony, so they started to track.
Well, I wanted to ask the board to do it because it's settlement of a claim and they want it released, signed as authorized. Chris, the chairwoman, the sign to release.
We cast a meeting.
I've talked to Michael Craft before, can you get it to bank tomorrow morning? Yes.
I think we could, should authorize Chris to sign this one because he's been working really hard on it. He's up to date on everything on this.
They going into the study book again?
No.
Unfortunately, all we're doing is paying the contractor. We had to fix the road and fix the pipe and then they reversed us for our staff time. We had people out there till about two in the morning and boil water notices and follow-up like that, so they paid that $1,000 in the staff time and the contractor stuff. And we had it all fixed pretty quick.
You did.
Well, that's...
Yes.
Kenny, Kenny was on top of it. He had a ready crew, people on call. It's crystal ball.
Motion to authorize Chris to go ahead and sign off on this.
I'll second.
Okay, with motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Madam Chairman, that brings to mind a question. May I ask the district manager a question?
Certainly.
About 10 days ago, week and 10 days ago, there was an automobile accident on Tree Line Avenue.
Correct.
And...
Shear to pole.
Shear to pole.
Right.
Now that's, pole is one of our poles.
Correct.
Is it not?
Correct.
And when's it going to be fixed and who's going to pay for it without a doubt?
Well, the claim's already been filed with their insurance company. We had a staffer out there a couple hours after it happened because the first thing before you remove a pole is shut the power off to the pole and there's been a pole ordered already, but those custom poles take about six weeks to get.
And how expensive are they?
That one, I'd have to look at it and see, but typically...
They're very expensive.
That fourth floor?
No, that's a fiberglass breakaway, so it wasn't one of the real expensive ones, I'd imagine about nineteen hundred, but I'll get the price from.
Oh, if you don't have it, don't worry, I just feel curious, I could surprise, on occasion, as to how expensive some of the little light poles are.
Yep, some of those poles are five thousand dollars, those double fixture poles.
The driver walked away, by the way.
What's that?
The driver walked away from that.
That's surprising.
He read, I don't know, I just stopped and talked to the police, they were trying to find out who owned the pole. And I said, they thought the city of Fort Myers owned it. I told them to call Chris up.
Johnny on the spot.
And is Mike, why? See if Mike wants to tell us anything.
Don't go away, this, the second feature is better than this.
Hi, Michael.
It was just for informational for you guys, as of the last month.
I just wanted to make sure there wasn't anything else you needed to share with us, and it also gives us an opportunity to wish you a happy new year.
Thank you, happy new year.
Is there anything else you had to add to me?
Any questions from his report?
I haven't read the full report, did they?
That one just came in after I had already done that.
This just got put in my book.
Yeah, it's in the guy added after I submitted my stuff last week, because we had to have it in kind of around Christmas time, so.
Is this separate from what's in the book?
Yes, it's monkey. I didn't get anything. Oh, you guys didn't get updated book, probably, it came in late Friday.
No, I didn't see it. I think. Steven had popped it in.
We can.
Wait a minute, we got a second version.
Yeah.
Oh, I think it's there.
I thought it was something in addition to that.
No, nope, it's just. I got that. Including the report.
Is that the full November financial statement, is that what?
Correct.
Is there anything in it, it's still early, it's probably not getting any.
Not much.
No income yet from, from the assessments, does that show?
No, and see, mine is as of October, and it is reflected, there's no income from the assessments yet. Here's his report here, and you can see the general fund. Right here, special assessments, some have come in, about half a million dollars.
At true November?
Yep.
That's versus the, we were originally talking four hundred.
What do you mean, four hundred?
Were you talking about the excess?
No.
No, this is, this is about revenue. No, this is just tax.
Incurd revenue of the year today.
Okay, well, we can, we can look at it in our leisure after the meeting, if you tell me there's nothing exciting.
There's nothing exciting in it.
There's nothing exciting. I got it in my book, advantage of getting it. All right, with that in mind, I will take a motion to accept consent agenda items four, A through D as in dog.
So moved.
Wait, 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 I got, I got a note on this thing, so. The minutes of November fifteenth, on what was page eighty-six, while I was going through my book.
Okay.
Could you put that, Chris, eighty-six?
Line, what line? It's four B.
It's four B?
B is in board.
There was a resolution authorizing the public to preserve folks to spend some money.
Mergent.
Subject to later ratification, but there was not in this, in the minutes that I read, there was no dollar amount. And I think there are the.
Distribution of funds for payment of certain emergency expenses related to public observe without the prior approval of the board supervisor. Was there, should there have been an amount?
I think there was an amount.
Was it ten?
Ten thousand.
Ten thousand?
I believe it was in the draft resolution annual memorandum, because I think.
Not to exceed, there's probably like a not to exceed statement.
If I recall correctly, the prior board being, that issue had come up in the board authorization, and said.
And then we brought it back, yeah.
Resolution, so it was in the agenda package, that's important.
Yes, but I think it ought to be in the final.
How do you know it's important?
So.
Need to update the not to, not to exceed.
Need to update it with a dollar.
I think that dollar amount was written in the actual.
Yes, it was.
Resolution to begin with.
Yes.
You just not carry it over.
So with that correction to the minutes of November fifteenth, and I assume the motion maker and the secondor accept that. Take, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, moving right along. That brings us to proposed increase in utility connection rates.
I'm going to go, Grant.
Ah, he's hiding.
Behind door number three.
While we're waiting on him, should we take a five-minute?
Let's do that, yes.
I believe you did.
I got a really interesting message. I think it was a Facebook message, a question that I've never had answered before.
I'm calling you back. Chris, I'll turn this over to you for the proposed increase in utility connection rate fee.
Okay, a little background, in the past year, we've undergone the rate study. And after we finished that up in February and March, we followed it up with the connection fee study. And the connection fee is basically an increase in the cost for new utility service, it's strictly for new construction only. And so only new housing would pay it, even though I would caution the board before they count their money, that a lot of times, the larger developers, when they see an increase in these fees coming up, they'll come in and prepay them for all their break.
Help our cash flow.
But it also will look, it actually helps the current property owner, because if the price is higher for a new house to hook up into, it actually adds value to the existing housing, because their house is worth a little more now, because it costs more to connect the utilities. So we have Darryl Parker is here today.
It's involved, what Chris was saying about the ability to buy up is because, and it was alluded to before in some of the conversations, about the required notice that we have to give as far as any increase in connection fee, that notices have to be provided not less than thirty days before the effective date of any increase. So that gives those guys opportunity to prepay or buy back connection fee before.
And after Darryl makes his presentation, you know, we'll have a discussion about it. And one thing I was going to change from our agenda item is, is I'd like to push this to the second meeting in February instead of the first.
That was the public hearing?
Yes, sir. Instead of public hearing for that adoption, it's really just give us a few extra days to get these notices out and the legal notification, and plenty of time to get it published. And we also plan for our utility bill that will be going out the eleventh of this month. We'll have a full enclosure, detailing all this information. And this, this comment I make about it is Gateway has the lowest rates in southwest Florida, and after this, we'll still have the lowest rates in southwest Florida.
The public hearing would be the February, what?
Is that the twenty?
Twenty-eighth.
Twenty-eighth.
So our two meetings are fourteenth and the.
Twenty-eighth.
It didn't sound right. Fourteenth is a Tuesday, that's when we're having the workshop.
Seventh and the twenty-first.
Twenty-first.
So instead of the seventh, we'd like to make that the twenty-first. As I mentioned to the gentleman too, we also included fifteen percent off the top from our gross revenues, to have that money every month, or every time we do a bill cycle, put into restricted accounts for maintenance, for water, wastewater.
By account.
By account.
By account.
That way, we know where the money's coming from, and we know where the money's going.
What's, what's the advantage of doing that?
Well, basically, instead of trying to budget money every year and put money away, in that budget cycle, when you're taking it off the top of your revenues, you're building a little bit of a war chest.
I didn't mean, I didn't mean that, I mean, separating out the three components, doing a separate, as opposed to just having, you know, one pot that you can dip into whenever you need it.
Well, typically, in a utility business, those funds are restricted by water, wastewater, and irrigation, because if the money's coming out of the irrigation pot or going toward that capital, it should be spent on irrigation, so.
Now, is that the generally accepted principle of?
Yes.
Of utility accounting, or?
Yeah, they try, they try to keep it separate, even though you do get cross subsidies, like we're doing right now, you know, our wastewater and water revenues are supplanting the irrigation, because we're losing money on irrigation.
Well, when you, when you separate it like that, when you separate it like that, that's when you start getting the complaints from neighbors about a sixty-three percent increase.
Well, the fifteen percent will be across the board, and we didn't raise the water and wastewater rates, because we wholesale that service in, so we're really covering our expenses to distribute and collect the process with the irrigation. It's a little different, because we're operating all the wells.
Well, why don't you increase the water and the wastewater to provide some additional.
Offset?
Budget offset for future years.
Well, that's something you could do, but right now, when you go into a rate case, it's basically a mathematical exercise. So if the county's been charging me a dollar, and they're still charging me a dollar, then I'm going to tell the customer, oh, we're going to charge you more money. I mean, we could, but typically, I don't know what I would base that on.
Well, you'll base it on the fact that the county's going to charge you a dollar twenty-five next year, and they're not going to tell you, and you're going to all of a sudden be under the, under the gun.
And when we do have a pot of money set aside for rate shock, you know, like that, to bring it into, you know, give us some time to buy, buy into the customers with the new rates, because that could happen, and we're actually meeting with them next week to talk about that. Right now, and six months ago, they had no plans to increase it, but if they do.
What, you're talking about rates, or are you talking about connection fee?
Rates.
Rates, from the county.
Right.
Any event that they increase.
Yeah, well, we have contractual requirements with the county, that they have to give us notice and all that. That's another thing that, next time that we have a discussion, want to look into the calculation on both the water and the wastewater, of how we're being charged, because we do not use any of their distribution or collection system at all, and shouldn't be paying for that. Treatment plant, totally agree, but not collection and distribution system.
And I'll bring that up at the meeting we're going to have with them next week.
I also think that this adds transparency, when you're separating out the three, and you're being specific with having what the income is and what the expenses are, it just adds another layer of transparency that we can show why we're charging, what we're charging.
It may be, but then you have unhappy residents when you have to show all that transparency that looks unfavorably on past action.
Well, and, and there is always a reluctance to raise fees, and then that piles up on, after fifteen years, of a reluctance to raise fees, because we, you know, we don't want there to be unhappiness, and then it causes a lot of unhappiness, because we weren't doing our job raising it a little bit at a time, and previous boards have not had the will to do that, so.
Again, it goes to, to things, a question for Chris, but there's a story that we should be telling in conjunction with this increase. And it goes back to everything that we've done for two years about, you know, building more accountability, you know, everything, all those maintenance due diligence that we're doing, but now, we have to start telling that story with this increase, why? Why are we increasing at the rate that we are, and looking at the infrastructure, you know, projection out, what we need to fix today, what we will need to fix in three years, five years, until that planning story like the gentleman was, was alluding to. But Chris, I do have one question, with the sixty-five percent, and I understand the logic behind it, and I actually, you know, don't have any questions on how we got to sixty-five percent. The question I do have is, that is a big number, I mean, when we were going through budgeting, when we said twenty, what was it, twenty-two percent, people were freaking out, even though when you break it down to the dollars, it's, it's.
Twenty dollars.
Yeah, but I understand, but sixty-five percent is a big number. Would, how disruptive or is it an option, Darryl, did you guys talk about maybe splitting that in half and doing a three-year transition into the full hundred percent? So if we took sixty-five and say we split it up, and say we're going to do, you know, thirty, you know, thirty-two, thirty-three percent this year and next year, or broke it down into three parts and do it every three year, how much impact would that truly have on the district? I know we'd have a little bit of loss in revenue, because the quicker we do it, the more money we would bring in. But from a resident's perspective, did you guys talk at all about sequencing that, that increase over a certain amount of time? So we don't have individuals, especially on these master meters, they're the ones that are really going to jump up and say, oh my gosh, this is, this is huge.
Sure, and we can look at that, and we did, but basically, this rate is predicated on the operational, you know, expenses we have and the capital expense.
And what we need to continue.
And to, and to make it self-supporting, and I'll also say that one of the things, you know, you can talk about pumping all this water and selling all this water, that's fine, but you also have the Water Management District permit, that's going to limit the amount of gallons by acres you can pump. And we're getting to that point where the water use in Gateway, and I don't want to use the term obscene, but the amount of water and the amount of people we have watering five days a week in some of these master metered communities that are using millions of gallons a month.